This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call to order the monitor select board November 30th at 6:00 P. M. And all select board members are present here in town hall. We took last week off because of Thanksgiving. The first item is meeting with the town clerk Terry to discuss updated boards and commission list. So do you want to present Terry?
Well, this isn't a hundred percent, but this is been working on for hours.
When you say it's not a hundred percent, what do you think is left to do with this list to get it to a hundred percent?
Well, notifying all the fire department that they need to do the ethics and open meeting law, the little test. Usually at the end of December, you print this out and then notify everybody January 1st. So I've updated the best I get all the be elected. I made sure those are all on there. Even if someone like Nancy Tomasovich resigned in January, I put it ended in January. Wouldn't have ended in January, but that's what was, but it did. She resigned. But I work, it's so tedious because I have to work from the hard copies, the website. And I wanted to present something tonight.
Well, that's one question that I've had is when someone resigns and then say the select board appoints someone until the next election. We need to keep track of accurately because we haven't always in the past. What, there's the question of how long they are in the seat until, but then at the election, how long is the term for, right?
Yeah.
Because like Eileen Marcus, just for example, off the top of my head, she is appointed until May. But her seat will be up for a one-year term, right? Because that seat is in line with mine on the select board. They were both three-year terms, so.
So it ends up with staggered term still in place.
Yes. So I don't know how that could best be done in here. Obviously, the conservation commission isn't appointed. But even, so if we go to finding its committee. It says Eileen Marcus ends May 9, 2023, so her term will be up. But is there a way to keep track of? I mean, I know that there is just on pen and paper or whatnot, but in this system that, okay, Eileen until the next election, but the term is really until 2024, May 1.
Then you would redo it and put this in the history and then you would have the.
Okay, so there's a, there's, well, we have printed out here, but there's a history?
Well, the person would be, it wouldn't show up on there, but the history would be kept in the computer.
So it keeps information, you just, there's a database that's larger than what we print out. That's what I figured.
Because it would be self-confusing.
Yeah, totally. You don't want to print the whole thing.
It has on the right-hand side, people that need to take their.
Oh, the ethics.
Ethics test again.
And it's the ethics test that's now being kept by the state, right?
The tracking of when they've completed or not, but the town clerk is still responsible for letting people know that they have to take.
Gotcha.
I thought with that new system, and I could be wrong, didn't they say that?
They haven't done the training yet. They haven't said much.
They didn't, yeah. What I recall is that the new system, they will keep track of, and there will be like a button there where we can select whoever we want and then notify, and it will automatically send it to them.
That's my understanding, but this new system has not gone into place yet, so right now it's still the town clerk.
Where do you think it goes?
It's my understanding, January 1st, but I'll let you know as soon as I get more information from them. They were first just asking what towns were going to do it.
The other question that I have, just looking at fire department, for instance, but I know it comes up in other instances. So the select board makes indefinite appointments, and then people move away, or they quit, or they do whatever. But we never hold, we never formally get them off of our appointment list. To, on our end to do that, because I remember this came up last year, it's a long process to remove an appointed official, you have to hold a hearing. They have certain rights. If we could get them to send in a letter of resignation, that seems like the much easier route.
To just get them off the rolls.
Yeah.
I do take them off our rolls. I, I keep a list that does say how long the term is, how long is left on the term, if like, say, in Elene's case. And I also update if one of the firefighter is no longer on.
But I mean, and formally, as far as appointments go though, they're appointed until their term runs out, or they resign, or they're removed, right?
So are you suggesting we don't do indefinite appointments so that we don't have to live on that?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that because it does seem like it has a lot of benefits. But I don't know what to do. Other than that, as far as I'm concerned, if we appoint someone indefinitely and then they don't quit, and we don't remove them, they're still appointed until, I mean indefinitely.
And there's, there's no way to, like, if someone just leaves or dies or whatever, you can't just.
Dies might be different. I don't know about dies, but like, I'm just looking at this list. You know, Paul Rap left town. He's clearly not involved with the fire department anymore. He's, you know what I mean? But.
Isn't the fire department one that we don't have to appoint them? So maybe they could treat as employees and just hire them instead.
Yeah, I mean, that's another question.
That's another question.
But the topic may still, but it still might apply, like the Lake Garfield Working Group. It's happened before where people just become inactive.
Right, and we usually get a letter from them.
They, they have a penalty to actually resign.
I see where he's going with the fire department, because they don't submit a letter. That's why I would make that a point.
But that's other thing we could do is we're, I mean, so we could either go make them employees, or we could request, hey, you know, you're leaving town and you're not going to the department, can you just send us a formal letter of resignation so we can take you off of our list?
Yeah, assuming they give us a forwarding address. Can you think of other, besides the fire department?
Well, that would just be indefinite appointments, because otherwise we should catch it when we go to make.
Right, make appointments, yeah, yeah.
Well, and the other, the other question, so I'm looking at town charter committee, expired November 3rd of this year. Should people be removed as soon as their appointment expires? Because sometimes appointments lapse. And actually Jeremiah had said appointments lapse, people continue on kind of the middle state where they keep on, yeah, keep on in limbo. But in this case, like at the town charter committee, we made a decision as a select board to let those appointments lapse because we felt that, that it wasn't, the time wasn't right to have a town charter committee right now.
So was the committee that's been?
Well, we didn't go through the process of asking them to resign or removing them from office, but we just let their appointments run out and didn't reappoint anyone.
How about the committee itself? Does that need to be formally? Ended?
Is there even a process for disbanding here?
I'm not certain. I'm sure there is. There's one to create one, there's probably one to.
But there, I mean, the only process for something like, and we had a advisory vote at town meeting to say we should start a town charter committee, but the process for creating something like our, like a Lake Garfield Working Group is just appointing people to something that we call like Garfield Group, and we made a mission statement or whatnot.
So you would think the opposite of that would be just deleted from the rolls. Their appointment expires and it just goes on.
We've, we've done this in the past when we had a who was some kind of transfer station committee again, or the name of it was, and all the board did was vote to not have the committee anymore.
Yeah.
I mean, if the board created, I think the board, the board can get rid of.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a, if it's an ad, essentially, that's equivalent to an ad hoc committee, right? You've made a committee to do a purpose and at some point, yeah, the purpose is over and you dissolve it.
Yeah. So to go back to the initial question, to what we can do to get this to a hundred percent. I mean, what, you are going to notify people about state ethics. Is there anything else that you can think of that you could use from us to help getting it to a hundred percent?
Well, like when people pass away, I, I'm not notified, like the one you found last night. So how would I know? Another thing is when the selectmen appoint people, I need addresses. I need to put this in the system, the addresses, to get in touch with them, because I don't know where, you know, get in touch with half of these people. I need emails or a phone number, anything, because I just get a sheet of paper with their name on it. So I have no way of calling.
That's true in some cases. And it's almost like the, the appointing committee, the one that's asking you to do it is not giving you any information.
So, I mean, if we know that the, if, that assumes we're not the appointing committee, right?
No, you are, but I mean, like if the council on aging asks you to appoint someone, they're just saying, oh, upon Tyler Smith, that's all they're giving me.
Right, so that we need to contact whoever was the recommended committee and ask them.
Well, that's a new case to change, which needs to initiate.
Right.
That anybody who's being requested to be appointed comes along with information and is passed on to the clerk.
Contact each other.
So if, if someone's a resident, you have their information. You may not have their phone and, and email.
Well, so she would get that though when they come to be sworn in. Because I send them the appointment letter, so when they come to be sworn in, Terry would ask them for all that information.
Assuming they come to be sworn in, but as we know, that everybody does.
If they don't, then they can't be on.
Then they can't, so, but we can't, can't even send them a notice to come to be sworn in if she doesn't have contact.
So we had a. No, no, it's.
I send it, right.
Who sent it, right?
But we actually do have a systematic problem, people not coming to get sworn in, and I don't think it's unique to Monterey.
I'm sure.
And I don't know if we want, I mean, I don't know that it makes sense to take extreme action and say, okay, if you're not sworn in, we don't consider anything your committee does valid. I mean, that's pretty extreme. I'd prefer that when you come and get sworn in.
They can't follow down the issues of that.
That's what, I mean, if you're looking at it technically, yeah, but what do, I mean, what do we do when we have people who don't come and get sworn in? Notify. What?
You invalidate a vote and when a bill doesn't get paid, then it'll be, uh, understandable.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
They need to cut it off before that, so these people need to be notified.
I mean, I.
If they don't do it, then the committee who requested it needs to be notified that this person was not a valid committee member.
I, I would think, what if we, when we, when a committee asks us to appoint someone, we ask number one, we need contact information, that's just their name, and number two, when they get appointed, we send something, not just to them to tell them they're appointed, but to the committee chair or chairs and say, please remember this person's vote isn't valid until we're sworn in.
Yeah.
And that does happen, but it still doesn't happen.
So what I would suggest is if Terry is, when she gets the paper copies that someone's been appointed, if within whatever timeframe they haven't come in, she should be notifying me that they haven't come in, and I will work with her to get those people in.
If that makes sense.
So I mean, it's not really a select board, she should, she should be working with me as.
No, we're just trying to make sure there's a system.
Right, and I think that's the easiest way.
But that end of, so the board chairs are refined, it still doesn't happen.
I think it may be when Sophie and I just start doing it on the ground, because as well, we can emphasize those chairs that it's crucial that you do this and they have seen it.
So here's another question. If you get elected for a second term, do you need to get sworn in again?
No, as long as the term doesn't expire.
But I see there's a member of the.
One left.
Lapse.
Yeah. I see a member of the park commission without a sworn date.
Who is it?
I don't want to couch out them this much, because without knowing for certain, but like, I know they've been on the park commission for a little while. Is it possible they got sworn in?
Maybe before my time.
Yeah, I don't know if they've been on that long, but I just. Yeah.
Yeah, there's also some planning board people that have had this one.
Exactly, and that's for real.
But again, well, actually, the two, two of them are very long-serving, or not maybe very long-serving, but long enough-serving members.
But if that's true, shouldn't yourself or Terry carry over that they may have originally sworn in?
Exactly. What happened was when everything was lost, that's when the problem started with, with my, when that system, when everything was deleted. I've had to manually talk to people and I know the person you're talking to about, and I don't have any way to know if they were ever sworn in, and I asked them to come back there and they say I've been sworn in, but I don't have a date.
But when people are sworn in, you have them sign something.
Now, I do now.
Now, no. Right now, but that's, she's in the things that were previously lost from years ago.
So it's, no, no, I mean, when people have been sworn in, they always sign something, as they sign, they receive the open meeting law, and that's been in my 17 years, Terry.
In my six years and a half, I have it all with the signatures on that.
So I think Tom Sawyer's only been on the planning board for within six years.
Before my time.
I don't, I couldn't, I don't, that was before I was involved. I just know he's been on.
I can look. On my list. Rogers, I hadn't been there for a long time, but Tom Sawyer, I think it's been on in the six years.
Oh, yeah, as he's been consistent.
Right.
No, I'm talking about Tom.
I know, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, Rogers been.
I'm planning more in November.
Anyways, I don't think we should get caught up on that, should we? Terry can work with me on getting this stuff.
Right, no. Right, it's.
Are there, is there paperwork dating back before your time that this would be?
That's, I, I can't find that either. There's a lot I can't find, yes. I've asked the other town clerks, but
The paperwork?
I did the best I could with what I had. So move forward.
Okay.
Still have a commu, where is the communication center?
That's also a question I have. I, is that maybe the broadband committee?
I, uh, I don't know. Doug McTavish, Elizabeth Mathmire, Libby Wolf, and Callie Beers. I don't think so.
No, that was just.
I'm pretty sure Libby Wolf would probably not have been on the broadband committee.
She's one that I remember. I was on that.
None of those people, I'm going to tell you in my 17 years, there's none of them in the communications center.
Yeah. So that'd be another one. We might want to think about, um, disbanded? I'm not sure of the correct word.
Well, let's look into what paperwork there is to put them on a communication center in the first place, and then.
And they have, they have folders, not to interrupt, but they have folders. They have folders on the file.
But nobody remembers what they do. And I think the people that are supposedly not, haven't served in some time, so.
The other thing is.
Some were sworn in in 2019 for that?
I'm thinking that that's gotta be in the right.
Okay.
Didn't, did we just extend Dave Dempsey's concom appointment?
David, Dave is off, Tim is off, and, well, Tim is on until December 31st.
Tim on. So that's one I see on the concom, Tim love it, till December.
Okay.
I was trying to remember.
So at what point, if someone is no longer serving, should they still be showing on the list?
Well, that, if you want them to show on the list, yes, but if not, I can delete them.
We don't want them to.
We, we don't want them. It should only be people currently serving.
But we, but we need to keep the history of.
Right, yeah, just for the current list.
Did they serve out their whole term? Or did they resign or die, or that, or get removed? I mean, that's really the options, right? You could die, you could be removed, or you could resign. We need to know if, when that happened. But yeah, this should probably be only active serving.
Which is a choice just in itself, trying to figure out who wants this list to.
Well, if your term's expired, you shouldn't be on the list, that, that would, you know.
I see two deceased.
Which, besides Ellen Wright, who's the other?
Uh, Roy.
What's he in?
Fire.
Fire.
Oh, right, okay.
Like, uh, yeah.
So I, I did take them off, but, um, I believe board health, but, or wherever, I see where, I forgot.
The fire department.
I, oh, maybe that's my phone.
Is Cal Teddy going to install the fire department? Anyway, that's fine. Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea. All right. Well, making progress.
Okay, here's another point, just before we leave appointments entirely. So Donna told us to appoint mayor as inherent, right? If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
But when she's going to get sworn in, she's going to be Donna Brewer.
As a person, yeah.
I don't know.
So.
Okay, well, well, how do you, how should we proceed?
The tricky thing there too is that we actually have more than one mayor as inherent to lawyer serving, like I've seen.
Well, that's why we appoint the.
The firm.
Firm.
Right, but only one person gets sworn in?
I mean, I don't know if she can get sworn in or be out of the firm, it gets, this stuff gets confusing.
I know, but council is bound by a whole bunch of things in legal areas, so I would think it. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, they're bound by lawyer-client privilege and a bunch of other things based on the contract with them, so maybe it doesn't matter.
So.
We're thinking it.
Can you look into all the things that were brought up, like communication center and other names that were mentioned tonight? And also make this so that it only shows people who are current. So if someone resigns, they shouldn't show up on here. If you can discern that someone has passed away, they shouldn't show up on here. That, I, that, I, I think those two, those steps would be in the, in the right direction.
So there's something else, while I was checking into this, I was on the website, of course, and these minutes from these committees, they're all missing, like the agendas. I didn't want to print all the agendas, like the planning board, I have all the agendas. And the minutes are missing off the website.
Are these all 2022?
Yes, yeah.
So for agendas, actually, this is something I've been meaning to bring up, and I haven't. So people are starting to post their own agendas now? And some of them, I don't think council on aging and planning board went to the town calendar that, this most re, most recently. I don't think it's illegal because it goes to the plan, I don't, it goes to the planning board page and the council on aging page, but we need to make sure that it does go to the town calendar, right?
Can I say? It's on the town times.
Yeah. I just noticed, because I got the email that said council on aging agenda, and I was looking at the town calendar, and I did not see it on the town calendar.
So, um, I will look into this, but I can tell you right now that this list is incorrect because, um, I think finance committee minutes, a lot of those are on there because I've been, I'm named Michelle, and I've been posting them.
Oh, well, maybe it's since I did, I did this a while, you know, not this week, but a while back.
Like, how long ago? Because, I mean, within the last month or two, these have all been updating, so maybe.
Oh, okay, all right.
Do you have a, a prospect, like, what month you did it, right?
No, so it could be, but there's some, like, board of health is okay, and selectmen, assistants.
The latest date on here is August, so. At least that I see.
I don't know what, because I. That's not correct either, because.
Nope.
Does it, here's an under. Well, I know for concombs, I said, I, Terry should go over this with me.
Okay.
Another problem that people have that might reflect in here is sometimes meetings are canceled without proper notice, because I, I've been at at least two planning board meetings that didn't reach quorum, and I doubt that anything was posted. I mean, I don't, what do you do? You do, do you go back to the agenda and write cancel, or do you post minutes that say the meeting was canceled?
No, I write, I go back to the agenda, I write, I just.
Okay. That might be.
That's what I do. I'm not sure what the, the committees that are posting on their own, right?
Yeah, well, that would be something to.
Which is why I thought this was going to be able to do it with one person, so it can stay standard.
Yeah.
But that was just something I wanted to bring to your attention, if it's not accurate right now, because.
Well, it's a good thing to look at. You gotta start somewhere.
You know?
Yeah, the town charter, no agenda, no minutes, because they never met.
So that can do something, because I, finally, I have the, my last. This is my resignation effective today, and this is the time only three. Um, I thought long and hard about this, and as of today, I'm resigning.
Okay.
I have a computer, a laptop I've never used, a mouse, keyboard, all the keys for the town hall, and 21 roll, uh, 22 rolls of stamps, so it's all in this bag. And.
So are you just saying that you're walking out of the position as of tonight?
Yes.
Not going back to town?
No.
To close down your office or anything?
Everything is all caught up as of right now. Everything's perfect, and I just wanted, I guess, Justin or a police officer to sign off on what I'm leaving here, because everything else is like computers, um, I can't bring it in here, it's in the bag. But I've never used the computer on, Emily Johnson had it, I never had the password, and I didn't have any need to use it. But it's got a keyboard.
Good.
22 rolls of stamps, I didn't want those to get lost in the shuffle.
Is there, usually the clerk accepts resignations, is there any chance that you know who accepts a town clerk's resignation?
Or the selectman.
Understood.
There's every, every key that go to the office, and there's all the stamps, so I wanted to take it. It's easy, so I just need somebody to sign off on this. I'm not leaving angry, I'm just leaving. I'm not angry, I just want you to know that.
Thanks for finishing this list before you leave.
I see 22 of those.
And I didn't count those, but it's every, all the keys.
Where do you get these from? What are these for?
They're for, you know what they're for? It's, uh, the laptop.
Do you know, are these filing cabinets or something?
The post office keys, it's key to get inside, I just.
That's 22.
Okay, and you saw the laptop and the.
I have not yet.
What's doing?
Yeah, what?
I was trying to, I was trying to spend one way of strategy, but this last one, I have strategy, there's the answer. We can't get it, we can't talk about anything like that tonight. Uh, I'm only resigning, so there's the laptop, the key to all of this. Did you see it?
I did, yeah.
And I've never used it.
Okay, I actually have four at one time, but.
Okay. Sorry, I don't want to test what it is.
I'll put that some. And I see, there's a safe. Keys can go in.
You tell it all, because it's heavy.
Uh, sure, yeah. I, I didn't see everything you're saying, I didn't see.
You don't leave it in here, Kelly.
You want to come?
That's fine.
Uh, yeah.
You want to keep that?
Please.
Okay. Okay, so.
Besides the post office, do you have any idea what these keys are for?
I'm filing cabinet, so these are these. This was over town hall, this is her office, these are. This is, which are, that's the post office, does that mean that Terry's resigning too, or?
No idea, yeah. So tomorrow I will get in touch with Terry and I will reach out to the network of clerks to see if I can get someone to get in here.
Where's God? Where's God?
District.
Let me just wait and please stop.
Yeah, I figured.
What's up?
She gave you passwords to like the state computers and?
None.
That could be from her computer.
I don't know if she's gone. I didn't, I didn't see if she walked towards her office or.
So she doesn't need to get in my office anymore?
Um. Alright, so. The next item, I mean, agenda is new business one tax software upgrade request, so.
I'm sorry, if she had resigned, she should not be in there on her computer right now, erasing things or whatever, so, and she won't answer the door for me.
Unless she's in there.
Someone needs to go tell her that she's.
Well, your, where's your chief of police?
He's, he's out on a call. So someone needs to tell her to open the office, I'll.
Ah, boy, you know, me?
What's?
Can't be me.
Where is she at?
What?
She said it's like immediately.
She said effective immediately and handed all the stuff there, yeah.
Yeah, she shouldn't be in there.
So, but we need the password to the state computer.
Yeah, well, we also have the key to open our own door, if you need it.
True. Got a key?
Yeah. And I mean, and she should not get home with her. This is a fine fucking fellow, this town is.
Alright.
Anybody?
So she punched, she pulled out some stuff. Just taking stuff out of her office.
I mean.
We have no idea what it is.
I don't, and I'll just tell you that Ellen can confirm, one of the other towns she worked in, she stole all the office. And when they called her.
Is the card here?
It is.
Do you wanna go over there then?
Excuse me, may I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, do I understand that, that this, there's no notice given, and that there's no, um, no date for resignation, that it's just this minute tonight?
Uh, yes, I believe it was effective immediately, based on the letter.
And the letter was just submitted now, that the board didn't know this in advance?
That is correct.
Did she give you the passwords, Justin?
Happening news, Ellen.
Yeah, well, this isn't the first time, as you know.
There what happened?
That hers.
She's. We won't be able to access it. Did she leave the, right, did she hold the computer on?
Alright. Uh, just hold tight in there.
Okay, yeah. And Justin, I'm gonna suggest you check her car, just so, just like the thing she handed in, you can be certain that the things in her car are actually hers, and nothing belongs to the town.
I would, she brought a bunch of stuff out there.
Alright, can we move on to the, uh, next agenda?
I don't know, do you need to wait that one chance back?
Mm-hmm, it's really just, I don't know.
You guys can look at, look at the minutes, so then you're all ready to prove them, you could just be like, yeah. It's Justin's.
Okay, on to the rest of the agenda.
I feel like I need to break the bulk of the job right now.
The smell of the coffee has become so enticing, I had a coffee before I changed, but every time your coffee.
This year.
We're waiting for Brian, I think. Okay.
Okay.
Tax software upgrade request.
So the tax software upgrade request, there, there's a few things going on, but I think it's pretty straightforward. The company got bought by QDS, which is apparently the software that, the Buell. There's background noise, Ellen.
I'm gonna mute you, Ellen.
Sorry.
So, the main, the question is now, the new company, QDS. Well, i- i- it's a new company, but the, but the question is, and the assessors and the tax collector are recommending a forty-five hundred dollar upgrade.
Do they have it in their budget?
Well, it's not this year, so we can either pay it in fiscal year twenty-four, or we can spread it out over three years. Um.
Isn't that usually something that's on the warrant for the annual?
Yeah, we don't need the money, we don't need any money, you know?
They're asking for, right, they're asking for a commitment to go forward with the upgrade, that's, the, the company wants a commitment by, I guess, December thirty-first, as to whether we're going to do the upgrade or not. We don't have to pay at that time.
And, I mean, what could happen is we could commit to the forty-five hundred in, in fiscal year twenty-four, and then people could vote it down, and that's that. But this is only basically a commitment that we're gonna put on the warrant. If they vote it down, they vote it down, and that could always happen to any contract we have or commitment we have, but they are trying to.
So what's it do with this company, any good to have a commitment that's still pending?
They're probably trying to ascertain the number of towns that'll.
Don't sign up to.
Yeah, and probably only a cer- and, and estimating what percentage of towns, well, it turned out at a town meeting, but you have to upgrade your software periodically, I mean, that's kind of a.
It's been a while, but I remember, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an expected cost of doing business, I would imagine.
So is that mean we should hold on this?
Yeah, they're also offering supposedly a redu-, it, it's reduced if we uh, let them know by the time they're first.
Mm-hmm.
So.
The commitment, at least.
The commitment, yeah.
So is this something that we would bring up to that April sixth, by income, select board meeting?
We could do it at that meeting?
Why does that?
If we want their input, they were supposed to, this got sent to Michelle and myself, yeah? And she said she was gonna deal with it at the next meeting, and they've had two meetings since then, there are at least one, and they didn't deal with it.
Well.
We can put on the joint meeting agenda if you'd like.
Well, it's not that I'd like, I'm just saying that it's really kind of the first person that sees this is usually the Finance Committee, and then they make their recommendations to the Select Board.
I don't know what they were doing, but they weren't doing this.
That's what.
Should we do it at the joint meeting?
Or?
Or we can say, we can do a good idea, and they have to do it or not do it.
We can say that we, we agree with it, and they can do it if they're only, this, that meeting doesn't need, in my opinion.
We have, we have plenty of other stuff.
And there's just lots of time.
And we are going to be, I mean, I think we are, if I'm not mistaken, we are making the commitment, so I, so I put on behalf of the town, not the Finance Committee, yeah. So.
Consensus is, we all agree.
Let's s- spread it out to fifteen hundred a year for three years? I would move that we make the commitment to upgraded tax software.
But let's not make a commitment to the, the way it's paid off, so it's discussed with
alright.
The whole budget process.
Then it'd be better to just pay it off. Well.
Push you debt down the road.
So the problem is in the commitment, they're asking whether or not we wanna spread it out, so so here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna take it up at the joint meeting, and it will make, they're aware of it, we are now aware of it, so whether you, if you have a preference of three years or one year, and if you wanna prove it or not, bring it to that meeting, and we'll make the decision then.
I don't read this letter to say that we have to say how we'll pay. Or that we have to decide if we're gonna commit to it.
Section five payments, this is the actual commitment, uh.
Section five, where are we looking? On the next page.
On the very back page.
On the back page, ah, gotcha, okay.
Um, all payments due July first, unless the town elects to spread forty-five hundred dollar upgrade fee over three fiscal years, please indicate whether to choose this option. I mean, there's a chance we go and don't say we wanna spread it, and then we say, oh, we actually do want to spread it, and they let us, but it's just cleaner to have it right there first time.
Yeah, right, first time.
So, we'll take it up at the joint meeting, okay?
Okay.
Um, item number two is as regards the Hume versus Monterey case.
This is pretty straightforward, all.
Um, yeah, Jeremiah withdrew from the case as far as we know. There's nothing at the moment further after.
This is the letter he got from us.
Yeah.
Did we, did we ever actually ask him for a better accounting than the one he said? Cause I've never seen one.
Yes.
But we did, we did.
Yes, we did.
Donna did. Donna did.
We did.
Cause I did never see that letter or.
To see where that work.
Right, and he never provided one.
We did, and to my knowledge, he never provided one. The next invoice was to quarter hour increments, which is better than a lump sum, but not typical, I don't think.
Okay.
But it's a pretty, I mean, we can argue about what has happened and what's going on to get to where we are, but it's not really a question. At this, at this point in time, the question is if we should appoint, or ask Donna to file a notice of appearance, just so that someone is technically assigned to the case. I mean, hopefully, there's not, no work left to be done on it, we don't know for sure, but at the time being, it may be decided without any further
It may not be in the court.
paperwork, yeah, or any further court. And so it could just really be a technicality, but it'd probably be a good thing to do. Um, I did touch base with Tom Sawyer, who's chair, co-chair of the planning board, just to let him know of this update.
Did he have anything?
I don't wanna speak for him, but he seemed generally fine with appointing, uh, or asking Donna to file a notice of appearance. Um.
Pretty low impact.
Yeah.
Unless chance of being to appear, in which case she's gonna have to be prepared for the case.
So, uh, I'll move that, uh, we ask town council Donna to file a notice of appearance in the Hume versus Monterey case. Okay, any further discussion or comment? They're being, I'll call a vote. Aye.
Yes.
And yes, so that's a unanimous yes vote, and I will let Donna know that she should go ahead and do that. If, um, anything further does need to be done with this, I'm sure she'll let us know. Proceeding. The next item is the recycling dividends program grant awarded. So, the grant is about the transportation, and I just wanted to make sure, there are some requirements, I think they're pretty straightforward, put on the town by the grant. I just wanted to make sure that the board is on board with that, and before agreeing to that myself. But unless you wanna go over the general, just to the grant.
Prepare to do that. We got seventeen hundred and fifteen dollars for the recycling dividends program, which is a yearly grant that we get.
Which is basically because of all the things we recycle.
We earn points for different things, yes. We did end up getting less points this year, but she also said that they, um, modified the program slightly, because more people, more towns and communities are.
Which is not a bad thing, either, if it means less money for us.
So I would move that we accept the grant award for recycling dividends program and agree to the terms of the grant.
Second.
Um.
Aye. Yeah.
Yes.
I say.
Yes, and.
There it is.
Alright, so vote, students said yes, Justin, yes.
Uh, yes.
And Scott, yes, and it's just one sitting room, Melissa?
Yep.
Yes, maybe some other things.
Um.
Yeah, not, April, every other day.
Not certain basis, right.
Okay, we now, the next four items are all related to the Police Department and its ongoing changes. So there was a, we interviewed committee that interviewed, uh, of, of candidates for the full-time police officer positions, and made some recommendations for both the full-time positions and the part-time positions, and a couple, um, rate requests. So, the first is a full-time appointment, so I would move that the town appoint Sabrina Wilson as a provisional full-time officer beginning January first, twenty twenty-three. It's, it's really a one-year appointment, right, cause we.
Yeah, so I did include Gareth, gave me the bill that was.
Probation.
Yeah, and it has to be one year.
But the point being, we only ever, unless it's a sergeant or a chief or something, they're always one-year appointments, right?
Right, right.
It's not an indefinite appointment with a, with a one-year probationary period, so.
It's a one-year probationary appointment.
Okay, so I'm going to move that the, that the town appoint Sabrina Wilson as a provisional full-time officer for a one-year appointment beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, with a one-year probationary period, and an hourly rate of twenty-five dollars for thirty-nine point five hours per week, pending satisfactory completion of the bridge apartments, at which time the hours will be forty dollars a week.
Forty hours a week.
Forty hours a week.
Second. Yeah.
Is there any other discussion? Alright, I'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, yes. For Sabrina Wilson as a full-time police officer, thank you, Sabrina.
Alright, we're gonna have a female heaven.
I know, isn't that cool?
Last name was Wilson.
Wilson. Um, the.
She was not part of our group of people that came through.
You don't remember something? You really like some. She was the first one that came in on the morning.
It's not, no, that was. Oh, in the morning, the fir-, the first one was not, was the one.
Lauren.
Yeah, 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 okay, yep.
Yep. Move that the board appoint Lauren Nelson, uh, as a provisional full-time officer for a one-year appointment line, beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, with a one-year probationary period, and an hourly rate of twenty-five dollars an hour for thirty-nine point five hours per week, pending satisfactory completion of the bridge apartments, at which time the hours will be forty hours per week.
Second.
There's seconds, is there any other discussion or comments? Call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, that's a unanimous yes vote for Lauren Nelson as a provisional full-time police officer, thank you, Lauren. Um, I'd move that the board appoint Justin Byasson as part-time reserve intermittent police officer for a one-year appointment with a one-year probationary period effective immediately today, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Suck it then.
Uh, any discussion on that? There being, now we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes from Justin?
Yes.
Yes from Scott, so it's unanimous approval of Justin Byasson?
And Justin and Jennifer, they're already serving as, yes, I don't think, Justin, both of them, Shafia, Lee. Justin would apply to two more towns. Now Jennifer's gonna go in the shop. But no, they weren't with the. No, no, sorry, I was like two. Okay.
I would move that the board of the town appoint, uh, Jennifer Brown, uh, for one year as a part-time reserve intermittent police officer with a one-year probationary period effective immediately today, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion on that? There being, now we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's a unanimous yes vote for Jennifer Brown. So, the next request, I understand to be an, a request for the part-time hourly rate um, to be increased from twenty-one seventy-nine an hour to twenty-five dollars an hour, effective January first, twenty twenty-three. Um, in part due to the fact that the three full-time members of the Police Department will leave, uh, remain part, literally remaining shifts available to be even, to be less desirable.
Yeah, cause they'll get holidays off, and it's gonna be a rotating schedule for. So. There are, yeah, weekends.
Yeah, so I am, I would like personally to get a understanding better of what other towns are offering for the part-time police officer before making this decision.
Gareth did tell me that, um, there was already, it's becoming harder and harder to fill part-time slots. Understandably, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you, um, just sharing with you that conversation that, um, officers that are filling part-time slots are often filling in past their full-time job somewhere, and if they can pick and choose, they're clearly gonna pick the places that are asking for hours that are the best out, because it's, it's active. So, we could, we just have to be very aware that that could put us in a difficult situation, so it would be good to know what everything's being paid.
I, so I do a survey, um, people aren't answering the part-time, and I think it's because a lot of the departments are willing to just.
Full-time. But, I mean, every department's gonna want. But, I mean, every department's gonna want, small departments like us, they're gonna want people who fill in, right, even if everyone has to be full-time certified, so it's probably going to be, and it may be the case for the appointments, we've just made, that full-time officers in one town are going to be appointed as a part-time officer. Part-time in another town just to cover shifts.
Well, I think that the goal is going to be to go to all full-time officers.
But I mean, if, if you're a small town and you have two full-time officers or three like we do. It's very different from the, how the system currently works, where we have two full-time and like three or four, sometimes I think we've had up to five, right, part-time. So that if someone's going on vacation or someone has a day off, you have a lot of people to pick from, who may also have a lot going on in their life, but now that the bridge training is required, full-time certification is required, it's not gonna be people who hold other jobs in the daytime and then jump over for a part-time shift.
And it's always gonna be the case if, if you have fewer than like ten people, which lots of places would, and someone's on vacation, you're gonna have a, someone's gotta fill in, right? Or you just.
Which makes sense if you have ten, but if you have two or three.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I think you're confusing full-time officers with somebody who's working forty hours a week. They're all, there's no, there's basically considered, there's no more part-time officers.
Right.
Status. There are still officers that are considered full-time officers that have gone through full training.
Mm-hmm.
That are doing part-time hours.
But I think what we're talking about is what we're paying for the part-time hours.
Right, it's absolutely no different police work.
Right.
Than a full-time person.
And they're not getting benefits.
Doing a full-time shift, and. They, they're not getting benefits as a part-time.
Part-timer, they have benefits on us, right.
Right. Right, they may be getting benefits as a full-time officer in another town.
Not much.
Well, it may not be like.
I think it is gonna trend in that, I mean, uh, from what little I know, I think it's gonna trend in that direction though, because there aren't gonna be people working another career and then picking up shifts in the weekend.
It seemed that during our conversations amongst the chief and yourself and me and Sophia and all of the applicants, um, they, they were all concerned about the low scale of pay that Monterey was offering for their part-time courses surrounding towns. They all knew what the gig was, you know, and where the apple was, you know, being handed out. So, in order to get these people to come on, you need to come up and just be equal, equal. If it's a full-time trained officer only, say, twenty hours a week, that's the same job as a full-time officer doing a full-time, just in the forty hours. It's the same holdover, it's the same fear and loading of everybody that you walk up to the side door. You know, it's the same emergency response mechanism that these guys have to kick in.
And it's the same training.
And it's the exact same training and the same hard work and dedication, so you get people that are actually taking shifts that are less desirable than any shift, and they're coming here because they, A, wanna be in Monterey, and also they, they wanna, you know, they respect that they're gonna get treated and paid fairly. So, I mean, I'm all for it after talking to everybody and going through, but I talked to, um, all the candidates, the chief, prior chief. Or the, the current chief.
Current chief in the U.S.
The chief, the chief B, yes.
Chief A and T B.
Yeah. So, um, I mean, I understand it, having been in the seat, listening to it and being part of the circle. I don't think it's gonna kill anybody to wait another week to get these towns about relations.
Well, yeah, and also it's, it's only effective January first.
Right, so we've got time.
Here, and the last question I have before, it sounds like we're gonna move along and, and consider it next week, is, um, now I'm forgetting, but what about the budget? How does this fit in on the budget?
Uh, if the budget has, I'll call it padding, and it, it, it'll be able to say.
Okay, so it's been charted out.
We, we, I mean, there's always days built in for covering sick time, and you never know, you know, you could end up with an officer sick for two weeks that you need coverage for, um, so there, there are items built in there, and I would imagine if it goes over, it'll be very minimal, and it can be an internal transfer at the end of the year. But that, that's something that can happen every year, cause it's, it's hard to predict.
Yeah, I just didn't know usually, like Scott had said before this meeting, and now I forget about what. Oh, about the tax collector software. We need to put it to town meeting at some point. Um.
Yeah, this is gonna be coming up in the budget, the future of the police department is gonna be, you know, coming up on this sheet.
But we are, and we kind of did it last budget season because we had half of it as we currently do it and half of it with the new system.
So presumably, we got permission for that already from town meeting? Because it was already made clear that starting January first, that the three full-time officers, the, the chief and two, right?
Well, there's also gonna be some creative scheduling.
Right.
Well, and the part-timers are lumped into part-time expenses, so that one has more flexibility than, than like the full-time officers.
Officers.
Cause that's for one person.
Right.
But maybe Brian can speak to the part-time officer rate?
Um, I, I, I just wanna say, um, I, it would be a shame to lose someone to another town for a couple dollars. You know, I, I mean, I know that, I know that they, uh, they enjoy working here and, um, and I appreciate them, and, uh, like I said, I just think it'd be a shame to lose them, now whether, say Sheffield is, is paying, you know, twenty-four dollars an hour or something like that, just to lose somebody because of that would, would be a shame when we have good people, good people in place already.
So you had, I mean, you had four, um, part-time officers and two are moving up to the full-time position, so there's two remaining?
Right, correct.
Okay, but this would also apply to the two new ones that were appointed.
Right. Right.
Alright, well, we will reconsider next week, I mean, I'd like to see, because maybe twenty-five isn't enough. I don't know, I just wanna see what other towns are doing.
Right.
Um, alright, so if there's no opposition, we'll reconsider next week.
Sounds like class.
Um, with information of other towns.
Can you try to help me, because I have a little difficult time getting people to answer.
Sure. And some?
Well, I know, and I won't give you that.
I mean, even if, I suppose they could be paying the same thing they're paying the, the full-time officer, right, which is what we would be going to. So maybe you have to phrase it as like, do you have a separate part-time officer rate, and if not, what's the officer hour?
Uh, other towns do have part-time rates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had a feeling.
Yeah. So the, the last police department item is the detail rate increase, and the request for fifty dollars an hour, which puts us in the middle of the pack, uh, based on the other towns that are listed here, and right in line with New Wahlberg and San Antonio. Are there any questions about that, I think?
No.
No. I would move that the town increase the detail rate to fifty dollars an hour effective January first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Is there any other discussion or comment?
No, it's like, thank you for pulling together the list of that, so it was easier for us to make the decision.
There. Um, call a vote on that motion?
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous approval, um, so the detail rate will be increased to fifty dollars an hour effective January first.
Uh, I wanna thank Scott for going to all the interviews, and that's, we, hopefully, it made you feel better to know that at least one of us was there.
Um, the next item is the Valley Galley lease renewal for twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks for coming, Brad.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian.
Anytime. And.
So I'm just asking you if the rent will remain, and then if you, or if you wanna change it, and once you agree to that, then I will send this up to the tenants to see if they wanna.
When was the last time it went out?
Two, three years ago, maybe?
About fifty dollars, something like that.
Fifty.
I think it was a thousand and fifty. I don't, I don't know if you saw it, but, um, did you see the article in the newspaper about Houston tonic, the old school building? And they're making a proposal to make it into, um, affordable apartments, which they're classifying as seventeen hundred dollars a month for the two apartment, which personally is hard for me to see as affordable, but, um, so this is a pretty good deal, but raising it a little might not be on board.
I think, I think, I mean, I think that we should, I think that we should leave it, uh, I know other towns are, and we even are doing our own survey rate regarding affordable housing. But this is, even if it's only one unit, it's actually in some ways a type of affordable housing.
It, for sure?
Um, and we're not gonna balance our checkbook.
With an extra fifty.
With an extra fifty dollars a month, but that, that's my two cents, I know with.
Five hundred.
Um, how much maintenance has the building required over the last few years?
I know, we just did the fridge. Well, they have, um, they have a monthly pest removal, um, there was a faucet issue with the reef last year, um, the passers continue the issues, I think you.
Yeah, that was fine.
More than that, I guess. Um, Jim actually wants to make an appointment with them to get in there so he can take a look around, just to see if there's any glaring that he does see, um.
Well, we could always make it so that they're responsible for, for.
Well, yeah, that is inter- I mean, does the town own the, I mean, now we own the refrigerator, cause we bought it, kind of, but that's interesting setup, I mean, it could well be, we just, I, actually, I don't wanna speak for them, cause I don't know, it's not about rentals, but I think we own the shell.
Typically, yeah, typically the, the landlord, um, the facility, I, it's not furnished, but it's pretty common in the, I mean, all the rentals I've ever had have included.
Utilities. Utilities.
Stone and, and, yeah.
Well, I rented a place where you've got the couch and the bed.
Right, it's occasionally, it's occasionally furniture too, but typically it's the ki- large kitchen appliance.
It's just lap.
Possibly a washing, possibly not, yeah, that probably, um.
Well, I'm good with that.
I just wanna make sure that we have a means of maintaining the building, so it doesn't, and you know what I mean? Like, I don't want there to be too much deferment maintenance, so we end up with a problem that's hard to pay for.
Well, where does, where does that money go to? Does it go to the user?
Well, so yes, so here's what, um, a couple of the finance committee members I've been talking to, I was actually putting a separate line item to community center, and no longer funding it with this money, because we actually do need to allocate a little bit more to Valley Galley, which will take away from the community center.
And at some point, it's gonna need to be painted, or it's gonna need, I mean, it's predictable, you have maintenance on a building, like, that's a normal thing.
Well.
Yeah, probably.
Yes.
So that's understandable.
So let's do that, right, and, and plan on, we'd have to at town meeting, right?
Um.
Change the line item.
Yeah, the line item would be a suggestion, the budget, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna budget it as, as line item.
Well, I mean, uh, could, then it could kind of pay, pay, cause we're always doing, uh, when the revolving fund's gonna go over, so we increase the value out.
Yeah.
But if we separate it out, we probably won't be doing that as much.
Right, cause they, they would have, they would be a normal line item, like, you know, tax code or expenses.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but community center.
I would say, um.
We'll, we'll leave it as.
It's beholden to keep that property forever, and I can't remember how the will was.
My understanding, from past times we talked about this, if the will says if we choose not to keep it, it goes to the birch of kind of.
That we can't sell it, we could only just donate it to birch charities, yeah.
Good.
And then that money would go to their charities. Yeah.
Um, if there's no opposition, we can assess this.
Okay.
We gotta move on that.
There is no opposition, believing it as is.
In other words.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Do you wanna make a motion to increase the rent or not?
No.
Then we're leaving it as it is, unless you wanna do something else.
Fine, just everything else is moved.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, there, it's a general consensus. You're always welcome to make any motions you want. You could motion to adjourn right now, so if you're kidding.
Let's get married.
Okay, what's the deal with?
Okay.
Don had a, um, issue from a citizen complaining about the character and the way he was, um, treated by one of his inspectors.
Oh, Tirico?
Yeah.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
All right, but just around ten.
No, we're on nine. Um, Scott, this was your area.
Nine. Okay, this, well.
But I think it's not that.
They walked out the door.
Okay. Alright, then we, we are not, we're table nine.
Yep, table nine.
If there's no opposition, uh, permanently. Um, not.
Or until it comes back out.
Not, yeah, not, not true.
The boomerang matter.
Not, no, but permanently, as in I'm not putting on next.
No, that's fine, I asked you the question, and, you know.
Okay. Um, item ten, building inspector request to contact council re-electrical inspector clarification, so I spoke to Don Tirico yesterday, and he actually said that since we haven't, it's his understanding that since we have not adopted a consolidated department, it had always kind of de facto been that he was responsible for the plumbing, gas inspector and the inspector of wires. And in a recent, uh, how do you say, in a recent.
Fluff it.
Event. Um, though one of the other inspectors insisted that he doesn't report to the building commissioner and that Monterey is not a consolidated department, he reports right to the select board and town administrator. Um, I, so Don kind of wiped his hands clean of it, of the issue, because he says it's a select board town administrator issue, which, based on everything I know, he's right, and he actually doesn't want it to be that way. He recommends, not to speak for him, but recommending, he recommends adopting the consolidated department, because he thinks it, it would be more streamlined if the building commissioner, since the building commissioner is in for many hours a week and, uh, you know, goes to all, maybe not, not every site, I guess, not a lot of sites where plumbing, gas and electrical may be done, but, uh, since the building commissioner is also the zoning enforcement officer and spends all the time in town hall, uh, that he should be the department head. But, in the time being, right now, I drafted up some questions to try to get a sense from Donna, um, how to move forward. Um, who does, who do the other inspectors report to if not the building commissioner, and what does that look like?
Um, that seems like a good idea. I had understood that we had, I mean, like, I'd assumed incorrectly, apparently, that Don Tirico was in fact the supervisor there, but if that's not the case, um, it, it makes sense to have someone who actually knows about the building trades supervising the other inspectors, right?
Well.
Unless you think otherwise, that you might have more experience.
The way, well. The, I, I understand Nick's point is, but I also see Don's point, and I was perplexed that the two of them butted over this, but, um, Nick, I think, is correct in the fact that he can't be told anything about his inspections or the way that he carries them out, nobody else can do the inspection. Uh, but I think that the issue is in who then does he re? Who does he go to and talk about a problem if he's come to it, and he thinks it's the select board?
Nick does.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of disagree with that, I would've thought all along that it was Don, but he went out to show me some mass general law that made it sound like, no, he is kind of like his own entity, m- maybe being paid by the town to do the work for the town, to make certain that the, that process is carried out, but that he is like his own, his own department unto himself, just like the gas inspector is, just like the fire inspector is. But I was, I just kind of believe that Don should at least be held in the loop of each of those inspectors. If they have issues, it should go back to him, because he's the one who's gonna ultimately go out and sign off on whatever has been signed off on or whatever, but if there's a problem with one of the inspectors that they're having with a contractor or a homeowner, I would just think naturally that it would be reported back to the building commissioner.
But Don, when I spoke to him yesterday, Tirico, uh, Don's in town, uh, actually seemed to agree with Nick now that.
Well, I think.
It, it is the way it is, and Don thinks that we should change that, but that for the time being, you know, I think ev- everyone's in consensus for the most part, I could be mistaken, that we have not adopted a consolidated department, which means that the electoral inspector and the plumbing, gas do not report to the building commissioner, right? Um, now, the other question is if they report to the so- to the town administrator and select board. Uh, what, if anything, can the select board and town administrator do? So I ask in here, um, yeah, I ask in here.
He usually reports to the select board through the TA.
Who can authorize an alternate inspector? Would this change if Monterey adopted a consolidated department? So I know that if an inspector recuses himself from an inspection, then obviously the alternate, they'll have the alternate step in. But can anyone else ever say authorize an alternate inspector?
I think what, the way I read Nick's paperwork in the MGL was that no. Unless Nick is on vacation, officially gone from his duties, sick, incapacitated. That he is to do the inspection, that there isn't like any favoritism, like, oh, well, Joe doesn't really care for Pete, so we're gonna send in Larry. The guy who does it is the person who does it, he, she, however. So that's pretty much how I understood it. However, Nick has the jurisdiction to send in an alternate in his place if he so desired. But according to what I was getting from Mr. Fredso, was that nobody else can make that decision to send in an alternate.
So he is the only, um, but there's also the question of, so if someone. What happens if you go, if a contractor or homeowner wants to argue whatever the inspector's decision is, would, does that ever?
Well, there's a whole, there's a whole process.
That's a whole process.
There's a whole appeal process.
But I know with appeal process, it's a building inspector, I'm assuming it's the same for the other inspectors from A to Z, I don't know.
But I would think at that moment, the entire permit would become in jeopardy.
Right.
Because one aspect of it is.
Is in jeopardy, right.
That's like the non-conformity of a building, right? It's, if there's one non-conformity, you consider the whole thing non-conforming. So if there's one aspect of a building permit that's being, that's, that's a problem, I would say that then the entire project is in, is in a hold. Project hold. And the only person who could have the authority to then do that would be the commissioner.
Because in the end, the COO, the certificate of occupancy has to come from the building commissioner.
After everybody else has signed off.
As they've signed off, right.
So if you've got issues along the way, it would only make sense that you're creating them. Or if it's smooth sailing, the same thing.
So.
So what it, what it becomes is it becomes a little list.
I think it makes sense to consult with them, right, right.
Who wants to give.
But, a- and so here, here's the problem, is I agree we want to avoid favoritism, which is why I think it's pretty protected, right? The electoral inspector can only be the one if they want to choose an alternate. But what happens when there's a forty-eight hour time limit and it's, and we, and we pass it? And that's, and.
You mean the inspector, and doesn't get to it in time?
Yes.
Then that stays statute, it then kicks in.
Yes, but so if, if, for instance, I'm not saying we are, but if an inspector wasn't doing their job, the question is. Would the select board step in, supervise, make, take remedial action to make sure that the job is getting done? Or would Don do it? And so that, hopefully, Don will follow his.
Right, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, um, so I think that's, yes, we think you should do this.
Right.
Yeah, we need to know.
I just, if you had anything else.
I wouldn't make the policy change without bringing in the current inspectors, just a.
Right.
Better and running through them as to what their pros and cons are to the system.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, just, you know, since we're not gonna vote if we don't have to, cause even down, it's like, you know, he thinks it should go the other way, but it's not so far. And it never really has been, so why make a change if everybody else but Don is against it?
Well, yeah, and that would have to be something we bring to town meeting, so. We can think.
I don't think that would be, what would, what would we be asking the town?
Adopting a model, uh, adopting a national law.
Inside to consolidate.
Well, if it's a law, we don't have to adopt anything, it's already considered that we.
Sometimes, but some mess, some MGLs require a town to adopt it, yeah.
To adopt it as an ordinance, which is in cities or if you allow in towns.
Okay.
Um.
I mean, that we become, that is.
To set that statute, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I didn't, yeah, I didn't understand why we have to adopt the law. So it's in, well, I haven't adopted that, so I can speak.
But in the meantime, Justin, if if it is the select board through the town administrator, can, should you ask Donna if, like, we're able to. Delegate that to someone else?
Sure, here's the deal.
You know, I mean, like, so I could say, I'm too busy, I could delegate.
So, so, and I, I think a lot of this stems back to Scott's saying, it's gotta be impartial and it can't be favoritism. We don't, the worst thing in the world would be, okay, yeah, they're sending an alternate in because he's easier. And the, the homeowner makes a stink and I want the guy who's easier, um, so.
Well, we should never have somebody easier, we should just, maybe somebody who doesn't put it on somebody else.
Yeah, but the, the point being, when situations come up, and so I think the reason why there's this consolidated department law. And there's all these laws that are very specific to inspectors is to maintain the impartiality of the inspections. So I think this is probably one of the instances where we may not be able to delegate, because there is so much law about it.
Right.
I can add that in. I can add it in. I might as well, right?
Sure.
Which is part of the reason why I know this is a formality, but, um. I think it's good to bring up these kinds of things before the whole board as much possible, so that we can get to questions. As much as we can.
It is complicated, cause we wouldn't wanna just like say, oh, well, we'll just send in a different inspector, like in this case.
I will, it is. Right.
Part of the problem was that there wasn't enough communication of what the problem actually was, and once that was revealed, it righted itself, so.
So I'm gonna ask in addition, once here, can we delegate the role in lieu of adopting a consolidated department?
Or until we adopt it, just in case there's a, a problem.
Until.
Yeah.
If we can, at one time, we should be able to all time.
Yeah. Well, we'll find out. I'd move that we approve the request usually to council.
Second.
I, I.
Uh, vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval.
My, this is unanimous consensus.
Um.
All right.
We have the sign, copy of that?
Yeah, I have a clean copy, did they write on mine?
Here's a clean, all right.
Where we at? Okay, mail correspondence, we have none, we still have, we do have minutes and we have unanticipated business, but we have minutes first.
So the ten twenty-seven, um, I think it's gonna be hard to do the stretch-up version, allude your welcome to, I basically got it down to three pages. Which I thought was pretty good, since, like, you got it down a bunch and then I got it down a bunch.
Yeah, let's, let's read over ten twenty-seven and then see if we can approve it. Who wrote these notes? Lori drafted them, I looked at them, and Susan has looked at them.
So I think Justin cut it from like fourteen pages to eight.
I don't think I actually cut it that much. I think I didn't.
I got it down to three, at least on my machine at twelve point, I don't know. Okay, so this is not actually. The version that I, I did send you the alt version, and I don't think that's what this ends up being.
Please, it's.
Yeah.
Gave me like a, a lot of changes.
It was a lot of changes, but that's not how it ends up reading. Um, the first paragraph would be, Mr. Presto's resume by, and others' recommendation, and then providing to the board, originally from North Carolina. Yep, sure. It's a, it, it ends up at only three pages, but it has a, it's basically.
Can you, you know what, we don't need to see track changes. Let's just get a clean, for this one in particular, I think.
Strike. Okay. Okay.
Is anyone opposed to that? We're just making a clean copy of ten twenty-seven.
You email me a clean one.
Wow, yeah.
That's fine.
Do you, do we need to see track changes? We haven't seen the, do we, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do without seeing track changes on this one.
Yeah, I just think there's like.
If there's a general consensus.
Accessible amount of information.
Yeah, some of it's striked out, so we'll see. But let's move to, we do have to approve that tonight, we're late actually on it, so we do have to approve that tonight, but.
All right, I'm sending it to her right this second.
Yeah, let's.
I mean, the thing about it is that there's, there's so much, um, information here that.
Yeah.
You know, to me, uh, it's like approval.
Well, we're.
There's nothing derogatory here, and it's, there's so much here that you'd never be able to say, oh, that wasn't said, or this was said, or something else.
Yeah.
I mean, the point is, this is all just open.
Yeah. So I sent that to Melissa, when are we looking at the next one? Why don't you turn that out?
Yeah, let's look at eleven nine. I don't know what's the deal with eleven two. But we're gonna jump to eleven nine. Oh, oh, we have eleven two.
We have eleven two, eleven two.
Yeah, let's do eleven two. You got eleven two?
Eleven two. Eleven two.
Hey.
One two.
I just read these. I can't in that paragraph, I missed it.
Oh. Got one thing I see is, uh, meeting date, it just should be Wednesday, November two.
Wow, just goes to show I didn't, I just looked at the first.
I missed it too.
I know, did you catch that? Here, I'll just, it, it doesn't have the right date, I'll do something. We all skipped it here, you wanna?
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions about eleven two? Are we ready to approve as amended?
I'm, I'm ready to approve as amended.
Sure. Motion to approve the minutes of eleven two twenty-two as amended.
Second.
Call vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yes, so it's unanimous approval. Can you just mention that? Yeah. Okay, we're gonna go back to ten twenty-seven. And here we are, right here, this is it, front and back, one page.
Three.
No, three pages. I don't know where mine went.
Three pages.
I know. No, Scott has mounted.
Oh my God, this is like a flare mode from here.
I have a couple small changes in the last paragraph.
Go for it.
Um. So this is the one motion that was made during the meeting, um, beginning January first, twenty twenty-three. I would put at a rate of eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, and then with no probationary period and the contract to be finalized at a future date and after review by council.
Wouldn't it have to be a future date if it's after review?
Yes and no.
Can be a past date.
We have, we have more, we had more to do and have more to do, and I'm gonna bring it up under unanticipated business than just review. By council, because Melissa and Brian worked on a contract and.
Okay, actually, I just gave you what was, um, the chief's.
Garrett's.
Yeah.
Contract. Okay, understood. I thought that you had worked on it, I thought.
I figured I'd let you guys make changes first before, you know.
That's, that's the only reason, is because we have been in negotiations. So I just felt like we were like, we were gonna do the contract in the future and, and council was gonna be involved, but it was not just. We had a contract other than council reviews, right?
At a future date after again?
Af- at a future date and after review by council. That's what I, that's what I, you know, it's just my opinion.
I, I don't have a timeline, especially now that I understand your reasoning.
Other than that, I would move to approve the minutes of ten twenty-seven twenty-two as amended.
I've got one thing.
Yeah.
I've got it from first page, second paragraph up, last sentence. Says that he deals with some level of.
It, it, it obviously meant that he's dealing with people, but your point, actually, we weren't. That's why it's important to have editors, just leave that out, okay. Strike that.
I can get on board.
Thank you, good touch.
Okay, with that change, I would move to approve the minutes of ten twenty-seven twenty-two as amended.
Second.
Uh, call vote?
Yes.
Yes, and yes, can this vote to approve the minutes, you wanna put your two. Thank you. All right, I would really, I think we could do this. I think we're in the home stretch.
I know, right? We're gonna get, get up to date.
So we're looking at eleven nine and eleven sixteen.
So I think what we're gonna have in eleven nine is our usual situation where multiple people have fixed the same thing, and it makes it a little confusing, but we'll manage it. So since blue, blue was mine, I think they're red.
Yeah, and red is hard, I don't know why, even on the screen, it, it's hard to tell, right? It's just a little darker than me.
Red, so it should, I think, the, my, I thought in blue, the board has been reviewing the anti-discrimination policy to expedite its completion. Just so it's clear how that would have read without the red being strike through, but I think more than one person tried to fix the same thing, so.
Well, everyone knows how it's spelled, Don Dray, but last name.
Apparently not, I don't know.
Eleven nine.
Yeah, I'm just gonna write. T E R R Y and T O R R I C L, if we're all in agreement on those two spells.
Yep.
And then I'm gonna keep in the anti-discrimination policy, because I think you should read, the board has been reviewing.
The anti-discrimination.
The anti-discrimination policy to expedite its completion.
Yes. Yep, I, I think, I'm not sure why that was, that one wasn't used, the combo problem.
Yeah.
So you're scratching what was.
Scratching. Yeah.
Yes, or if I could, or one person gave them, then I could send them to everybody else.
I know.
She could do if you waited a week.
That's true.
Only you and Justin do changes, so Susan could do it first.
Or Justin doing first, I do.
I could do it in June, June the next week, and then Justin could. I could do it in June, June the next week, and then Justin could.
I don't know, do we wanna change that way of doing things?
I wanna get through what we have, the way we have, and then we can change it.
It's just horrible stuff.
Why does it say J M in the?
We got caught up once about every three moments.
So I wrote a J M above it, just so you would see the color difference.
No one, oh, okay, so just to show, okay, whatever.
So put that in and then that's my.
Darker lighter than you, I got it, okay.
The last thing, let's go with blue there. The last thing on that page, first page, last paragraph. It's gonna get confu- confusing if you try and go with the red and blue.
So it would read Susan said that the consensus from previous board deliberations about first hours with the majority of them should be during regular visits hours as it is public facing decision.
Yeah, other red, it's just gonna mess it up.
Right, right, yeah.
Like the red was.
We were trying to fix the same thing, I just rewrote the sentence. That is unanimous, unanimous. Oops. Why does that happen?
What's that?
What, what's that? There's no way I typed unanimous multiple times.
What page are you reading on?
That's the next page, the top of the, no, top of the second page.
Okay. Next, next page.
Right, Justin called the board on the motion, Justin called the board on the motion, Susan has the, the motion carries passes unanimously, unanimous.
I'm going to be.
What?
I don't know what's going on.
Eleven nine. Yeah, it's right there.
Oh. I was flipping through the last.
Oops, okay.
I think that's.
No, no, it's. Right, it's weird. How do we do that?
The extra space. Somebody might have hit.
I took time. If you don't wait for me, there's no way I can unanimous tweet on.
Are you, are you, were you use your copy, Susan?
Sure.
Can you just get things?
I'm gonna use your copy, I didn't write anything on here yet.
Okay, well, you didn't. I can, I can just read off the changes.
That's fine. Ooh, this is. Sophia, director, director, Sophia.
Let's go with the blue there, to not get confused.
Okay.
Well, it's Scott volunteered to participate in the interviews on behalf of.
Please, the word.
So we're gonna get rid of please. But. This thing's whack. Cause it should be Brian as incoming chief of police.
Really, Brian as?
Incoming chief of police, Scott volunteered to participate in interviews on behalf of the board.
Right. Oh. Huh. Maybe I inserted it in the wrong place.
Melissa, you print these out next week.
I don't know how to print them bigger.
I just, size issue.
I know, oh, you won't, cause you always ask me to do bigger.
Oh, these are fine. I was just gonna say, could I get a clean copy?
You mean you would?
You can give me both.
So no, I'd have to accept all the changes in order to give you a clean copy. And I don't, I don't know which.
The original.
Yes, that I could do.
Right. But before anybody else has it.
We're gonna get, we're, we're gonna get under control of justice.
It's okay, I mean. I just think that, you know, just like, for instance. It would be good to have temporary lighting for the community center, period. Obviously, it's good, so it's not dark for visitors. I don't know, I just feel like we're trying to write a story rather than just piece of points specific to what.
I'm still trying to figure out why, wait, look at this. It's so weird. I don't remember this happening before.
Yeah.
I don't know what's happening.
There's like multiple copies inserted in, so like it says for higher, for higher, and for two, two, or two.
And it, and it, that's why. You think, come over here.
It's really weird, I don't know why it's happening.
So yeah. Yeah.
I mean, the gist of of the minutes are fine.
Brian and you. Two hundred and eighty's. What's the rest of that sentence? As a select member, and Brian, okay, period, Scott volunteered, so it would.
That's it.
Melissa said there are five to six candidates.
So this would be strike it, strike the blue, right, cause that's repetition. Cause it says Scott is select member, Brian is, right?
Yeah.
So strike the blue there. And so we gotta pick one in the.
Yeah.
Interview committee or the interview panel.
Uh, blue, blue, blue. Right.
Yep, okay. But without the repeats in that last sentence.
I don't know if that has to do with the version maybe, cause I know when I come from Lori, they come as regular Word. And I use Word two thousand.
Three.
Seven or whatever, and I know sometimes when hers come across, like they won't, all my other documents won't show. I have to like manually change it to Word two thousand seven, so I don't think it's a format.
Why, why do you use old Word, can the town not get?
Well, sh-. Why, you think mine's the old one? So I was thinking hers was the old one.
No, I mean, I think I have Word twenty thirteen.
One of those words.
I can add that.
Yeah, right. I think there's a, there's definitely one since, yeah, right, twenty thirteen would also be old.
There's no words like every year.
Uh, is it, are there new ones?
Did they evolve them?
They're gonna give them Microsoft Office.
I heard it.
Yeah, mine is.
Words.
Mine is Microsoft.
All words, all, next week, nobody's gonna be able to.
Mine, mine is Microsoft Office Professional Plus twenty thirteen.
How'd you get that?
All of it.
All of it, probably. But I'm, I'm sure there's one since then. But I doubt, I have them as much recently. Yeah, it could be a version issue.
That's my guess, because a lot of times too, when you send it to me. Um, it, I get a ton of you formatted, you highlighted, you did this, and I'm like, why? Why are you doing it to me, Susan? But I finally realized that it's not you. I, I think you must not have like the same script.
Right, version maybe.
That I have, like, you know, maybe you're using Calibri or whatever, and I'm using Kindred Roman and like.
There is nothing, I, I'm constantly having a change thing out of Calibri, I, I do not use Calibri. It's an evil font.
It's weird, so I have to go through and I fix all that, otherwise it makes your text even smaller if I leave that, I'm not gonna find it.
I'm sorry. And I'm, I still, I often have to make sure it's turned.
We can always go back to the really old, where, you know, you guys stand right for changes on.
Oh, good.
Okay, I'm gonna go through the changes that I have, if that's all right with everyone.
Sure.
So on the first page, Terry is T E R R Y. And also present, also present remotely, Torrico is T L R R I C L. Um, the board has been reviewing, this is the next down, twelve oh two meeting with Sophia. The board has been reviewing the anti-discrimination policy, I kept them and we're ready to strike, stroke it. Um, at the very bottom of that page where there's kind of a mess, this is still the first page, a mess of a paragraph, I said we could go with blue rather than red changes to avoid double confusion. At the top of the next page, I just ended the motion carries rather than passes unanimously, unanimously, unanimously. And then unsustainability of current role of human resources director, I don't know why it would ever be.
I don't know why we crossed off the director yet.
The top of that paragraph that begins Sophia.
And just say Sophia.
I said go, we'll go with the blue changes.
Okay.
Uh, on the next paragraph, I made it read, the current panel is made up of herself as HR director and West's town administrator, Scott as a select board member. And Brian as incoming chief of police, and then struck the next sentence that says Scott's gonna be on there, cause it already says that. And then said go with the blue for the last sentence in that paragraph rather than the two reds that are.
I think you could probably just end it after two or three candidates, period.
Well, this is your changes, blue is your.
Right, I, oh, that's true, but then there's like four, four. But like, this is why we're tired about the weirdness of it.
Right, I'm gonna end it, I'm gonna end it after candidates.
Yeah, yeah.
And here. We all need to get the same word. Um, on the next page, at the bottom of beginning, name unknown, which is now gonna be neighbors of the camp.
Ah, that's what that is, okay.
I said, go with the blue on the bottom, which is gonna say, Justin said that the select board may be supporting a noise by law. At town meeting.
Okay. This is definitely worse than usual.
The version will. I didn't try to go through.
Oh, my God.
We got that stuff before you get it.
Then we're working on, we're responding.
Uh.
No, noise by law is that, we decided it's zoning or not?
The by law, the by, it's not zoning.
Yeah, it's ours.
The by law committee, by law review committee is going to draft one, but they wanted to complete their work on the rest of the bylaws before they do it. Last I heard, since my, since the chair is my husband, I feel like I can say that was not certain.
Time for the annual?
Correct, in, in plenty of time.
And all, all the language checked by the A G's office.
They're, I suspect they're going to run it by, like, run it by us and possibly council first.
So here's what I would think would happen, is it only goes on if the select board wants it on.
Right.
So I think we would review it, and if the select board wants it on, I don't know where you guys are at.
It'll have to be vetted, it'll have to be right to town.
Then it will go to council.
Yeah.
I mean, if it needs to go by Brian's.
Right, when it's written.
Right, when it's written.
You could send something there for it.
Exactly.
Right, so you, you write it out, they approve the verbiage of it, then I believe that it has to go to the A G's office too.
If we pass it, we need it, but we can't do.
If it passes.
No, I think it goes before it's, and that is legal, doesn't it?
Preceptively. Not in the past. Counting council, counting council.
And that's, that's the end of the line?
So they give us a draft.
Okay.
We look at inside line.
I'm just trying to think back.
We sent it to our town council.
Yeah.
I mean, all the ones I've seen.
I knew it had to be inspected and detected.
It gets passed at town meeting, and then it goes to A G after passage.
I knew that also.
Right.
That it, that's where it's finalized.
But you thought it went through them first, I don't think so.
Alright.
Um, the last change is two and correspondence is public comment, Justin, this one is Justin is working with Lori, I said we'll go with blue. And then.
And that was last page, so.
Wait, what about evaluation, three qualifications?
I didn't touch it.
Okay.
But we can touch. Um, confirm that. And where are you then?
Just move back to the page that we just left.
One A, new business, one A.
It, it's the same, it's just like doing this weird repeat thing, so I'm not sure what the best course is. The library staff principal, I mean, it should read the principal assessor will evaluate the assessors clerk and the board assessors will be evaluating the principal assessor.
I think it reads like that, Melissa's still looking into the community center coordinator evaluation process.
Period. Other boards and committees.
Community center coordinator evaluation process, period.
Melissa's still looking into the, into other boards and committees to determine the role that might play in evaluating staff's.
They might play a value, staff's, I was gonna say, okay. Or I guess it could be community center coordinator evaluation process and other boards and committees? Make one sentence, to determine where all they might play in value, so you see?
Let's go with light red, Melissa's still looking into other boards and committees.
Okay.
Um, okay. I think, I think it's gonna read five hundred and a half. Motion to approve eleven nine as amended.
Second.
Call vote.
Yes.
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 And yes, it's unanimous approval of eleven nine twenty two.
That one was particularly painful. Oh, is this, is this what you were talking about?
Yeah, so I, I wasn't even gonna go through all that one, I was just.
And that doesn't show on mine. If I, if that came from me, oh, wait, no, I'm blue.
Whoever you. Sometimes it's Justin too, but.
Okay. We could use this, this is the last one, right?
What's that?
I'm trying to figure out how sense that Adam Deon.
Yeah, let's just, let's just do this, Adam Deon, contract designer for National Grid, presented design work.
The designer, yep.
For the pole extension line, okay?
Yep.
Does that work with everyone?
Yep.
Okay, going down, the changes, someone formatted the roads to all, look, Crump Road, San Antonio Road, San Antonio Road.
Right.
Let me know if you have opposition to any changes. And said National Grid is only doing six foot leads onto private property. Karen Allen isn't.
No, we're framing that way, I was right, like private property, yep.
Karen Allen isn't a butter. Um, can reach the current house, which is currently black and powered, let's just go with. Can reach the house which is currently black and powered, that's what it's there.
Yep.
Adam Deon said that the fire chief did review the plan with representatives of National Grid. And it was said to place the poles far enough from the road so the plows and emergency vehicles could get through. Mark. Mark, should be Martin.
Martin, that's true.
Um, I'm just gonna keep going, if anyone sees anything else, you know. Justin moved that the select board approved the poll petition as designed in the plan presented by National Grid, Susan seconded. Martin shares his experience with approaching National Grid to a client, have poles installed so that he could have power brought to his property. Adam Chief is gonna get deleted.
Okay.
Uh, Martin discussed his recollection of the previous select board meetings.
From, I think you should enter from the approximately year.
From. You would know.
Well, I don't know the exact year that it was.
From about.
It was about nine years ago.
From about nine years ago.
So I, I.
From about.
Important that we put that little.
Yeah.
Thing in there, so that it isn't somebody's.
Clearly it's not this board.
Right, that it isn't.
From more than five years ago.
If you put it, sure, that was, you could say that.
But was there one consistent number?
No, and actually you weren't on it, it was Wayne Ken, was he, it was Wayne Ken you?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was Steve. He said it wasn't him.
No, Steve, Steve only told me the other day, he only got involved when this newest cycle started to be on the.
No, Steve's came on.
So what happened was we had a poll petition early in my time on board, and National Grid said at that poll petition. Something like, we might be back at some point about that Crump Road.
Right, they had the informal letter that they gave to the guys writing that one. Stevenage, Karen, and Collette, they, she took herself off, I'm like, oh, didn't Justin tell you? And she's like, no.
Yeah, I didn't. No, I didn't, uh.
So you may want to, because she is planning on rescheduling.
Yeah, no, I'll talk to her. I just need to talk to someone else first, and I have had trouble getting, he's had trouble reaching me. He wrote.
Yeah, so what now?
So this next paragraph, do we need to have this thing about five years?
It looks like somebody. I don't know, we could, I mean, it looks like either we're just saying delete the whole paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that works.
Okay, we're gonna delete that whole paragraph.
Less is more, I'm going with less is more.
Okay.
Paragraph two.
Paragraph two.
Yeah, you should delete it.
On page two is out.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Justin called the vote on motion to approve the poll petition as designed in the plan presented by National Grid. Someone else deleted the next paragraph, I think it might have been me. Is it okay to just delete that next paragraph?
Uh, go, yep.
Susan, yes, Scott, no, Justin, yes, the motion carries, poll petition is approved. Joanne said that the project will now move to scheduling after payment is received from the Maraz's.
Maraz, 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 Maraz.
Who? Yeah, it's M R A Z, I'm sorry.
It is, yes.
The select board. Re, this is reviewing the minutes about reviewing the minutes. The select board reviewed the minutes from ten eighteen twenty two, which was a joint meeting of the finance committee, Justin moved to approve the minutes of ten eighteen as amended. And called a vote, Susan, yes, Justin, yes, Scott abstained, minutes approved.
I abstained, just because I wasn't even at that meeting.
Do you want that?
No, I don't think, no, doesn't mean.
Um, the board discussed keeping open meeting and executive session minutes for this particular meeting to gather and post it to the website. Ten twenty six twenty two, motion to approve minutes of ten twenty six as amended, Susan seconded, the minutes were approved. We're on to new business. Melissa will post a job description on the website and an ad in the paper, okay? Melissa said any regular increase in hours would need to continue past July into the next fiscal year, okay?
Yep.
Justin asked about community center lighting. So some dimmers and shades were installed, which appeared to help with the light pollution, but hindered the lighting in the driveway at the community center. The board. Okay, we're just gonna go with the board, yeah? The board discussed ideas. The board discussed ideas to fix lighting in that remaining workshop, yeah? We're gonna delete upon, we're gonna delete her in exchange for she, and we're gonna write, Jim shared the process that will take place once the easement.
Yep.
Is complete, okay?
Yeah.
We're gonna change was to his. Um, the town is looking for one point of contact for community center property maintenance, Justin asked Lori Shaw if the community center could discuss this and determine who this will be, and now we're gonna delete all this other stuff. Where people wrote over each other, and.
Lori, you said, I'll get you on that.
For now, and agreed to discuss it with the committee when they meet in December. Melissa said there were six election workers for working, that were not appointed but are getting paid for working in the November election. Versus an appointed position is deleted, so the pros and cons of indefinite appointment were discussed. And then, is unable to be present on election day and a backup was needed, Justin will reach out to the town clerk for clarification on the matter. Discuss payment towards nine one twenty-two Jeremiah Pollard bill for human case appeal. Town council on a requested an update from the select board regarding payment. The board already paid Jeremiah approximately five hundred last fiscal year and agreed to pay him approximately thirty-five hundred more during a previous meeting. Uh, toward the previous work completed, the board had also paid up to twenty, had agreed to pay up to twenty-seven hundred, we're just gonna keep twenty-seven hundred. For the current opposition brief and the town. And, and the town will pay the two two nine five.
Bill.
Deal for opposition brief, the board discussed the situation along with the pros and cons of paying the entire invoice amount, since the amount was significantly different from, than the original estimate. And the town has not notified part of the significant overage. Justin moved, we're just gonna one move, with no prior communication, called the vote on a motion unanimous approval. Unanticipated business, town council spelling is corrected. Regarding the R F P for the playground. The board signed off on the reimbursement request, comments and questions from the public. Ellen Coburn presented a paper copy of her complaint against town employee to the members of the select board, and delete all that other stuff after that. Ellen shared her concerns with the select board, delete all that other stuff after that. Justin said that they were aware of the situation, should any board member wish to take up this item at a future meeting. And then I added the documents used for the meeting. What the change is, I read them off, I would move to approve the manual eleven sixteen twenty-two.
Sir, yeah.
Call the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, unanimous approval. I do have a couple of items on anticipated business, nothing too long.
Excellent.
So the fuel account, is that zero?
Yeah, it won't be one state due, that will have to be one transfer.
So, we're gonna have to, we're talking about this at a future meeting, but um, does that might have been great ideas? Other than call a special town meeting and use free cash? What?
I knew it was gonna get raised, I asked the same question.
I think that's ultimately what you're gonna have to do, but I think, I did talk to the accountant today and I think I can be a little lax with, I can charge to snow and ice.
Yeah, well, yeah.
A little bit, but it still doesn't solve the problem.
We all.
We're gonna have to, it's come, March, you're not gonna have anything.
I just asked the question, back home, we just had a special month ago, how come we didn't know this was gonna happen then?
We did to some degree, didn't know the extent, I mean, I didn't realize it was gonna run out, you know, before December had to rain. I mean, that's just me personally, I remember Melissa said that we were running low, but we just upped it by what, five thousand?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, we just upped it from twenty to thirty this past budget season.
Except the price of oil went, it doubled.
Where's this fuel going to?
We.
So raising it by, and so this is my recollection from previous conversations. That the, there's been a problem with fuel costs for several years, and that there was consistent pressure to raise it, and that the finance committee kept not doing that, and you finally got them to raise it this year, but although they raised it ten thousand, that didn't really take into account the fact that the price of fuel has more or less doubled in the last year.
So we're, well, I.
Yeah, I mean, who, who, I mean, but to some degree, so we're not locked in on a price, or are we?
Uh, yeah, we, we locked in a pressure each other, I'm sure.
For this. Was this fuel being used?
It's diesel fuel and and um, gas on for the vehicles.
Just for vehicles? How much have we gone through already?
About twenty thousand, thirty, thirty thousand, sorry, thirty thousand.
In this year?
In six months.
It's actually, doesn't it start to life first, so it's actually starting to life starts, yeah. Yeah, so five months.
Five months, sorry, am I bad?
No, that's okay, cuz that was in there too, and I was like.
Each bill has been, you know, about four to five thousand dollars.
Yeah, why didn't I put it?
Four thirty-three, I believe, or four, it's in four twenty-two, four thirty-three.
So this is a strange question, but is the gallon usage substantially different than past then?
I would have to look at it.
Might be good to have that by far, you know, to the finance committee, because if this is the app, the normal amount of fuel for those five months, then the problem is that they didn't, when they made the budget last year, we didn't account for the price of fuel. Right, if it's the same number of gallons it usually is.
They did, but there was conversations about, you know, hoping it was gonna go down and.
Well, what, you know, I know a lot, a lot of this is probably diesel, but gas went up and kinda came back down. It was up at about four and what is it now, three eighty or something?
It's close to four, it goes up and down.
It's still almost two, two more than it was.
Right, it was like two fifty, not that long ago.
When. When we're, when we're making two fifty for gas?
Diesel was insane. Two years ago?
One, yeah, a year and a half.
Really?
Where were you going? I feel like it's been, it's hardly dipped below three yet, in nine.
Really?
Yeah, I couldn't be wrong.
Okay. Well, Dee, but diesel was.
I mean, I, I've been.
For a while diesel was cheaper than gas, and now it's like over five, right?
Wow. But I, it seemed like.
It hit almost six in a while.
It seemed like it was, but.
No, diesel, diesel is shot.
Been two's for quite a while there.
I mean, July we had fifty-three hundred dollars in bills, sixty-five hundred in August. Forty-nine hundred in September.
Melissa, when you're not doing anything, could you look up the uh, just past fuel, like what the average cost of gas has been?
I can actually pull that bill right now, is there something?
No, I mean, just over the last few years, like what gas was, say, twenty twenty.
That, no.
Twenty eighteen, nationally.
That would involve me going through some boxes down in the.
Not, not the, what we bought, but just nationally, like what the price of gas was in Great Barrington in nineteen twenty twenty, nineteen twenties.
Well, I remember.
Yeah, I'm trying to find out, it's, this is the current prices.
Twenty ten, it went up above four.
It went up above four, it dropped back down, but it's not, yeah, I mean, I don't know, but I'm just throwing it out there and we need to do something.
Yeah, but that was junk site.
Yeah, it did, most of them.
I remember buying forty cent gas at the roadside.
Is B twenty regular fuel? It's up, difference from last year, I, I think that's why you're fuel, it's just mass doc go.
B twenty?
They're saying current quarter four twenty twenty-one, three ninety-six percent difference from the previous year was forty-seven percent.
Yeah.
Ah, that's huge.
So, but to spend down the budget in five months.
I don't know.
So, any other ideas?
Well, I mean, you know, we also had the full crew this year, whereas we didn't last year, so more machines and trucks were running, as you know, people, we actually had bodies to fill them.
Yep.
Um.
Well, it's.
So, I think the first thing we need to see is what the fuel, not just the cost, but what the fuel usage was. Because if, it's even if there's a small increase, but not a huge, it's not double the amount, then the problem is that they were guessing that the cost of the fuel would be lower than it actually is, so that was the problem, yes, it's not so, but it's, question, is the usage increased, or is it that they estimated the wrong price when they calculated what the fuel cost should be?
Yes, with gallons per year, how many gallons per year have we?
So there's nothing to do on this tonight unless anyone, you know, but let's deal with it in a future meeting, okay?
Yeah, well, um, like you say, how, how do you deal with it, what are our options?
And let's. So there's two, to me, there's at least two issues here, one is we have to figure out what to do in this fiscal year. The other is we're coming into budget season.
Yeah.
And we need to have fuel usage estimates from, like, the amount we actually used over the last, each year, over the last five years, right, every year. So that we can make a better estimate for next fiscal year in this fiscal cycle and not be lying to ourselves about what the cost of fuel is gonna be.
Right.
Because that, that doesn't do anybody any favors.
Well, probably never see it get below two eighty a gallon again. I mean, you have the bats pushing this, even though our, our cost per gallon of barrow crude is now down around eighty-three. And when it was back in the, if you remember how low it got, it went really low, which is when we were buying it for a dollar something a gallon, two years ago.
You were getting your gas for a dollar gallon two years ago?
Am I the only one that goes to, gets fuel around here?
Where are we going?
Well, I remember getting fuel in Great Barrington, well, not necessarily Great Barrington.
For a buck a gallon?
For like a dollar eighty-nine a gallon, two dollars a gallon.
Maybe, I remember, I remember around twenty-ten, when it went above four, it came back down to like one, below two, it was ten years ago.
Am I crazy?
Yeah, okay.
Was it that long ago?
So Google said in two thousand nineteen, the lowest it was, was two forty-nine.
Come on.
Right. What was it? Two forty-nine?
Two thousand seventeen, it was two forty.
Ten years ago, it went below two.
After years ago, it was turn forty-nine, so I'm not that crazy.
Okay.
Anyway.
It's on already.
Right.
That was Google.
Okay. But I mean, really, so reserve, reserve fund is getting attacked from all directions.
Yeah, of course, because it was, and I think it was too low to even, that's a conversation for the next.
Well.
I mean, we had asked for forty and we didn't.
So.
You mean for the fuel? Well, even that, at this point, doesn't look like it would have been enough.
No, but it would have brought us closer.
No, I mean, we're on track to do some like, like, sick.
Yeah, it's still. Right, fifty-five, and who knows?
Well, no, because some, some of it is gonna go to snow and ice.
Okay.
If we have storms, if we don't have storms, that's not gonna, I'm assuming we're gonna get some storms here.
Stormy out now.
So, is it? Massachusetts.
It's not the snow and ice, it's raining.
Right, so, so that's where I did ask the, the comment, I think I made a little too.
Yeah. Wants to pray for snow and ice.
So it's Massachusetts all grades, all formulations of retail gasoline, twenty seventeen, two, in January, two forty, twenty eighteen, two sixty-six, twenty nineteen, two forty-nine nine. Twenty twenty, two six, two sixty-five. But, yeah, like, it's all over the place, but let's face it, we know it's way more than that, and, right, so, all right, well, and so that, yeah.
Oh, good lord. Okay, so, we'll take it up, maybe at this meeting with the finance committee, maybe at a future meeting, but it's kind of.
We're gonna have to take money from somewhere, or we're gonna have to have a special town meeting, and probably both, right?
Well, the only place you can take it from is the reserve fund. You can't do internal transfers until May and June, so.
So. So, we're gonna have to have a special town.
It's either special town meeting or a reserve fund.
Which we need fourteen days and months for.
For a special.
Right, so, but we could use the reserve fund to get us over, until you had one, maybe in late January or something, and then you raise back the reserve fund.
Cause we re-stocked.
Maybe you take care of this.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
I'm just trying to get off, give you a couple of things to make it.
Yeah.
What's the council?
The department.
Oh, right, yeah, I know, that, yeah.
Okay.
You wouldn't wanna talk to our inspector prior to.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it would work for them.
And I know the assessors have under budgeted as well, so anytime they buy something in expenses now, they need a reserve fund transfer, so.
Oh, they need.
They should probably be beyond there as well.
And what should, so the question is, that we're gonna have to come up with is if we have to go, it's supposed to have a minimum, how much are we asking for?
Mm-hmm.
Because we're talking about seven more months, and it includes flowers.
Oh, it's a great.
Spring.
I have a bike, I suppose.
Steve, I just thought with a bicycle, how would that work? Do we have any big horses?
Monary lights the way, shut everyone, shut all that electricity off. Hi, guys.
What are you pointing to?
Police chief contract, next steps, so, Melissa just sent the chief's contract, do we want to send it to council? Uh, and then, and then we look at it, or would we rather, or would the board rather look at it and then send it to council?
And so all I did was change Gary's name to Brian, so I put in the pre that would be for Brian.
I can't look at it tonight, Susan.
No, no, I just wanted to know if I had it.
Yeah. No.
I only sent it to you.
Only sent it to.
Oh, I'll say, okay.
Yeah, man, this contract has already been vetted by council for last year.
Uh, I don't know if it was la, I don't know if K P Law looked at it, but Ja, I think Jeremiah was the last one to look at, and I think you guys had said you wanted maybe a fresh set of eyes, so.
Yeah, I'd never have looked at it, I mean, we, it's what, three years?
I recall it being pretty, pretty simple, wasn't it?
No, it's one, it's one. Oh, one.
Pretty much the same one that we had back in the day.
That's all right.
Isn't it pretty much the same?
Pretty much the same, but it did get changed a little bit, I think here I had a few things.
All right, but here's the deal, do you want me to put it on the agenda for next week, and we'll look at it for next week, or do you want me to send it to town council?
No, agenda next, no, you do it, you, what you feel.
Okay, I'm gonna do what I feel like, yeah.
I, I, I'd like to look at the contract also.
I don't.
Yeah, all right.
So you'd be emailing it to her, or you want me to?
You can't even, I don't.
Please, yes, you can, please, I don't have my email.
Me, okay. That's fine.
Uh, the town clerk, this is unanticipated business, the town clerk resigned.
Mr. Murray.
Right.
Um, obviously, we're gonna advertise.
Yes, I'm gonna have to reach out to some other towns tomorrow, see if I can get some help, um, temporarily, temporarily.
Um.
Do we reach out to Mr. Shaw?
I'm gonna reach out to him as well, because it's not clear if he's resigning or not.
Right, does he, he must know, but, but I can't assume anything in this town anymore. Um, so, where does that put us until we have a new court?
Which is why she was signed up, and she had to get help.
I'm gonna, I'll get all the answers for you tomorrow.
All the answers. Well, but I mean, and, but also what we're gonna do is put out an ad, and we've kind of gone over the job description.
Isn't the mask on a long kind of describe?
We have a job description. And we're gonna put out an ad.
Right here.
We can appoint an interim town clerk, if we wanna do that, right, that's what we're getting at?
Yeah, let me get you all the answers tomorrow and, or as many as you can, as many as I can, as many as I can, and maybe some suggestions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, you have everything.
Well, yeah, I. Surprise.
That's true too.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I have some ideas, and I think maybe if I can get that.
I was told of everything about, I need a court.
That wouldn't be bad, I guess.
Yay.
All right, so, we'll work on that, uh, other than that, I don't have any other, does anyone else have unanticipated business?
No.
Okay.
Stan is coming.
Coming, there's no, there's no public, motion to adjourn.
Uh, second.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And a unanimous meeting adjourned at eight oh seven P M.